Praise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Johnson.
Here.
Kelly.
Here.
Mikulski.
Here.
Leaks May.
Here.
Polika.
Madam Mayor, I move we excuse Councilmember Polika from tonight's meeting.
Support. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ares? And now approval of the agenda.
Madam Mayor, I move we approve the agenda with one edit. I would like to add another presentation item to become sec- uh, presentation item 4A, a presentation from State Representative Helena Scott, and the existing 4A will become 4B.
Support. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We will start with our presentations then.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Thank you, Mayor and council members as well. I'm State Representative Helena Scott. I represent the 8th House District, which covers territories of Wayne County and also Oakland County, in this amazing city of Ferndale, and also Pleasant Ridge in Oakland County. Uh, I just kinda wanna come today to give you a little bit of an update about what's going on in Lansing. Um, so as you may have heard, the House Republicans have put forth a budget that really is gonna make life harder for Michigan families. What they claim it's going to eliminate waste, fraud, and abuse, but that is so far from the truth. Their plan really plans to cut many essential services. Um, earlier today, I was at Renaissance High School on the Detroit side of my district. Uh, the Education Secretary, Linda McAn- McManon, was here, also with the Speaker of the House, Matt, uh, um, Matt Hall. They were there really for a photo op. Um, and what they're really doing is, it's ironic that they wanna come and take a photo op with inner-city kids when they're cutting 1.4 million from schools, from the school budget. And I think that's really preposterous. They're also cutting $4 billion from the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services, 33 point, or 333.5 million in food assistance funding, and 59 million in the housing budget. 21 million for adult dental services coverage, and 500 million from prescription Medicaid funding. 45 million to maternal and infant health supports. They're also really in how this is gonna really affect, um, cities and villages and communities. 40 million in cuts to state revenue sharings to cities, villages, and townships. And also 39, or 34.9 million to cut the state revenue for sharing to counties. Not good at all, right? They're also cutting more than 1.5 million from Michigan State Police, which would equate to about 433 fewer full-time positions, um, which they're already struggling with staffing shortages. They're also gonna be cutting 53.4 from the Department of Civil Rights and the Diversity Equity Inclusion Program. Also 41 million from the Attorney General Dana Nessel's office, and 24% from the Secretary of State's office, Jocelyn Benson. They're also cutting 3.8 million from SNAP and Double-O Food Bucks programs, and 22 million from the water equality programs, 4.4 million from air quality programs. So I just wanted to come and let you know really what's happening in Lansing. I, of course, voted no, um, in addition to my Dem colleagues, when this was proposed before us at the House over a week ago. It's now going over to the Senate. We have to wait and see what happens. Um, negotiations are not going very well with Speaker Hall and Leader Winnie Branks in the Senate. So I don't know whether, um, we are a majority still in the Senate, which is a good thing, even though we're a minority in the House. Hopefully, this will fail over there. Um, so really what's happening is we're headed towards a government shutdown, sadly. Um, if a budget is not approved by the 17th, really the negotiations have to really kinda be complete by the 17th of November, but truly by the end of September, if we do not have a budget in place, signed by the governor, we will go into a government shutdown October 1st. And that's not a good thing. So I just wanted to come and let you know what's going on. Um, does anybody have any questions for me? No? Sorry, it's gloom and doom, but just know that I am fighting for us. Um, our other 52 members in the Dem Caucus are fighting for you as well. Um, and we're gonna do, you know, our best to continue to represent and make sure Michigan families are safe. We are not gonna go along with these cuts. Even though we are in minority, it will still pass likely, like it did out of the House. Hopefully, it won't out of the Senate, and I will definitely keep you updated. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Alright, our next presentation is recognition of Studio Push Pilates as a Main Street Connected Grant recipient.
So, thank you very much, Mayor and Council. Good evening. Um, Push Pilates has been in Ferndale for less than a year, but is already making a visible impact in our downtown. In January, owner and founder Alexis Hall celebrated the studio's grand opening with an incredible party, and it was very clear immediately what a dedicated following of customers she is bringing to downtown Ferndale. Um, I want Alexis to tell you more about her experience and motivation as an entrepreneur, um, but I have to share one thing that stuck with me in getting to know her, which was that, uh, in telling her story, she explained how her faith inspired her with the name to Push, uh, Pray Until Something Happens, is what the name for, came, where the name came from for Push Pilates. Um, and I love that, but I also don't think it gives her enough credit, uh, because she didn't just, you know, pray until something happened. Um, she planned, practiced, promoted, persisted until something happened, and the result that you see is an incredible transformation of that space on Woodward, um, and a fantastic addition to our downtown ecosystem. Um, and when we have opportunities like this, uh, we make a point as the DDA to let businesses know. We try and get the word out. We also try and add a little bit of extra encouragement to remind people to apply. And I have to laugh because back in May, we were celebrating the grand opening of Nine Kitchen and Bar, which is right next door, and also fantastic establishment with a great party. They're setting the bar high on that block. But I saw Alexis, she stopped, uh, she popped out to say hello, and I said, "Hey, I've got a grant opportunity we need to talk about." And she's like, "You bet, I'm on it. Let me know." And, uh, because she was prepared until something happened, she got her grant turned around and submitted within a number of days, and here we are. She is the recipient of $1,100 from MSU Federal Credit Union. Um, and that's gonna be matched with another $1,100 of her own funding, um, to invest in technology devices and software solutions that are gonna enhance her customers' visits when they show up for Pilates classes. So on behalf of the Ferndale DDA, I'd like to thank Main Street Oakland County, um, for their support out of our downtown. Programs and grants like this are possible to us because of our select-level status as a Main Street community. Um, and Push is the second recipient that we've had this year in Ferndale. Um, so if any others are inspired, uh, and motivated, there is another round of funding that's gonna be opening up from MSU FCU. That grant application will open on September 29th for downtown businesses. Um, it is a dollar-for-dollar match up to $2,500. Um, you can find more information on Main Street Connected Grant on the Oakland County website, or reach out to us in the DDA.
First, I wanna say thank you guys so much for everything. Um, even from the jump, when I first got the keys to my lease last October, from the neighbors, from the people stopping by. Everybody has just been welcoming me with woke, open arms. Um, as a black, single mom, you see I have my son back there. Every little bit counts, and you know, I'm doing everything out of my pocket, so I really appreciate you all for listening to what I had to say on my application and believing in me, so thank you so much.
Congratulations. Okay. I said the wrong way.
Um, so I'm excited to be back here for the second time this year to award a grant to Ferndale as one of our 15 cities with downtown districts in the city, or in the county of Oakland that is eligible for this grant program. At MSU Federal Credit Union, we really believe not just in existing in the communities where we have physical presence, but to invest in the communities where we have a physical presence, and the surrounding communities. So for those who are unfamiliar, our closest branch to here is in Berkeley at the corner of 11 Mile and Coolidge. And, um, as someone who grew up here in southeast Michigan, it's been a pleasure of mine to see MSU Federal Credit Union's expansion in southeast Michigan, and to be able to expand our community impact efforts in this region as well. Small businesses are a core part of what draws people to move to communities, to live in those communities, um, to uplift the school districts in those communities, and to stay in those communities after they achieve whatever education level is necessary for their employment. And so this is one of the main reasons that we launched this grant. This is now the second year of the grant cycle, and we're looking forward to continuing this with the next grant cycle later this year. As you heard, on September 29th, our applications will open again for a three-week period, so interested businesses in the Main Street District can apply for the grants, specifically with the purpose of supporting technology-related costs, things like, uh, point-of-sale systems, um, website marketing. Um, I do wanna give a quick plug for the incredible Shop OC e-commerce platform created by Main Street Oakland County. So for businesses looking for that, um, without necessarily launching their own website, you can list products on shopoc.com, I think. Okay? Um, and, uh, for more information, go to Main Street Oakland County's website. But I also, this, this type of giving is only possible because of our members that we have in this region as well. And so we do offer a selection of consumer and commercial accounts. I invite anyone who's interested to check us out and consider joining, as anyone in Michigan is eligible. And then we can continue to give grants to people like Alexis and Push Pilates. Congratulations. We're so excited. Thank you.
Well, as you know, in Oakland County, especially the Main Street program, we like to get some pictures, um, so we can continue to market this and continue to create and maintain the relationships like we have with Ian and MSU, um, Federal Credit Union. So if you guys don't mind, we'd love to get a picture with all of you, with this awesome big check, 'cause who doesn't love big checks? And, uh, just appreciate you always supporting the Main Street program and the downtown. Super vital.
I'm sure his clearinghouse has no idea.
Coming to called Audience, where anyone can come up to the podium and speak on anything on and off the agenda. I'm gonna dress. You have three minutes, and I open up Called Audience at 7:15.
You ready for me?
Ready for you.
All set. Okay. Um, my name is Mary Schuster Bauer, uh, 2634 Highland Street here in Ferndale. But tonight, I'm not here just representing myself. I'm here representing a small nonprofit called Citizens for a Fair Ferndale. We're an all-volunteer organization, and we accept big checks too, if you have any advocates to give out, because we are a nonprofit. Citizens for a Fair Ferndale, um, like I said, small nonprofit. And our mission is to, our mission is to foster a community that is dedicated to the fair and equal treatment of all residents and visitors, regardless of sexual orientation, race, color, religion, gender, gender identity or expression, age, height, weight, familial status, national origin, physical or mental disability. And it's no coincidence that those are the categories you'll find in the City of Ferndale's Human Rights Ordinance. So one of our objectives is to present educational forums and candidate forums. So that objective is why I'm here tonight. So everybody mark your calendars. Uh, on Sunday, October 5th, at 2 o'clock, right across the parking lot at the library. I'm gonna say that again. Sunday, October 5th, 2 o'clock at the library, there will be a candidate forum hosted by Citizens for a Fair Ferndale. And we have a committee working on that. And it's my understanding that at this point, all of the candidates have said yes, they will participate. And I want you to know that there's sort of like a three-part learning process in the candidate forum. We give out questionnaires to all of the candidates to fill out ahead of time, so that we can copy those and pass them out to people who, uh, come to the forum. We also will post those online. Yeah, so there's the questionnaire, there's the forum itself. Um, and we're, we're very excited that we have engaged a moderator who does not live here in Ferndale, because we want it to be as fair as it can possibly be. So there will be a moderator, like I said, from outside of Ferndale. So during that forum, candidates will make statements, uh, opening and closing statements, but also people in the audience will have an opportunity to write questions on cards and submit them, so they can be asked. Um, so we would really like participation that day. But we will record it, so people can watch it later on. So watching it later on is fine, but we really want you to be there to submit your questions. Okay, and then, if you heard me, 'cause I have 30 seconds left. If you heard me in the beginning saying, "Citizens for a Fair Ferndale", although that's a mouthful, right? Stay tuned. We're evolving our name and our logo, so we will be a little groovier next time I see you. Thank you.
Before you go, uh, is the forum going to be October 5th or October 8th? For some reason, I saw October 8th somewhere.
It's, um, October 5th is a Sunday.
Okay.
And it's at 2 o'clock in the afternoon.
Hmm, okay.
So hopefully, if anybody said October 8th to anybody, they said it wrong. Because it's 2 o'clock in the afternoon. And so, is, you know, like, I, I would mention, since you kept me up here. You know, the seniors had a fantastic forum. And, um, we, we, I attended, you know, just to see what it's like, and they had a fantastic audience. But we also, I mean, we didn't wanna say, "Okay, now we don't wanna do a forum", because they did one, because there were people who could mainly come during the day. There are a lot of people who can't come during a workday at 2 o'clock, middle of the day. So anyway, that's why we're scheduled on the weekend.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, thank you.
Still open for Called Audience? Okay. And I'm going to close Called Audience at 7:19. And we're moving on to our public hearing, which we will open up at, oh, you know what?
Excited to bring this forward. Alley within the Eastern Rest subdivision between Rosewood and Breckenridge Street. The, um, asked about the remaining feet. Uh, we spoke, spoke, and his surveyor did notice there was additional right-of-way. Who didn't there? Are bringing this back. Previously, there was 14 feet. Feet in the third, to be indicated, uh, before. Clean it up and make sure it's accurate with the, uh, the request before you. Did a previous meeting schedule this as a public hearing, uh, for September 8th? So it has been, it is a public hearing, and if Council has any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Public hearing. Up to anyone in the audience? So, any questions or discussion? Looks like we don't have any.
Through the, through the chair, have any neighbors brought forth a, like, issue or complaint written to you about this?
No, no. They didn't even, uh, you know, we didn't send out a letter to the property owner. The city can vacate right of way. It automatically goes 50% to one owner, 50% to the other. I don't even think the owner of lots, uh, well, actually, the lot owner of 29 and 30 knew the first portion was being vacated when the developers submitted the request. Uh, the city clerk did want me to also mention, we uploaded the documents. It did not have the correct subdivision name. It missed something. So we did correct that this morning, to be very clear, it's the Eastern Rest subdivision.
I move we close the public hearing at 7:23 PM.
Support. All in favor?
Aye. I move we adopt the resolution for the proposed vacation of the unvacated remaining north-south alley between East Breckenridge Street and Rosewood Street, east of Hilton Road, adjacent to lots 28 through 30.
Support. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion to adopt the resolution for the proposed vacation of the unvacated remaining north-south alley between East Breckenridge Street and Rosewood Street, east of Hilton Road, adjacent to lots 28 and 29, 28 through 30. Passes. Thank you.
Thank you. Kinda high-octane work.
That was a lot of it.
That we're here for.
All right. Now we're moving on to the consent agenda. Item 7A, approval of the August 2020, August 25th, 2025 meeting minutes. 7B, approval of the resolution proclaiming the week of September 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week. 7C, approval of the resolution proclaiming September 2025 as Suicide Prevention Month. 7D, approval of the facility use agreement with Ferndale Free Methodist Church. 7E, approval to backfill building official inspector position. 7F, approval of the amendment to as-needed service contract with McKenna. 7G, approval of agreement with Pleasant Ridge to dispose of street sweeping spoils. 7H, approval to issue a purchase order to J.H. Hart for the tree-cutting services in the amount of $40,000. 7I, approval of dot network equipment replacement project from Macro Connect in the amount not to exceed $44,518.14. 7J, approval of bills and payrolls as submitted by the Finance Director and subject to review by the Council Finance Committee.
I move we approve the consent agenda as presented. Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda passes. I would like to acknowledge the resolution proclaiming the week of September 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week. And I'd like to read it right now, if we could. At a regular meeting, the City Council, City of Ferndale, Oakland County, Michigan, held on September 8th, 2025, the following resolution was moved and supported. September 17th, 2025 marks the 238th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And the United States Constitu- Constitution establishes the rule of law and the power, as well as the limits of government, while enabling us to choose those who will govern. And it also implies the responsibility of its citizens to understand it and to support it. It is the oldest-written instrument of democratic rule in the world, still in use, inspiring many to come here and contribute to the nation that created it. It is fitting and proper to accord official recognition of this seminal document and its memorable anniversary, and to the patriotic celebrations with which we'll commemorate the occasion. Public Law 915 guarantees the issuing of the proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September 17th through 23rd as Constitution Week. Therefore, the City of Ferndale does hereby proclaim the week of September 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week, and asks our citizens to reaffirm the ideals of the framers of the Constitution had in 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms that guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties, remembering that our lost rights may never be regained, may, remembering, I'm sorry. Let me get this right. Remembering that lost rights may never be regained. And we have a proclamation that we'd like to present.
Again, Crusoe Anderson. I am a board member of the Ezra Parker Chapter of the Daughters of the American Revolution. More than a million women have joined the DAR since its founding in 1890. Today, nearly 200,000 members advance our missions of education, historic preservation, and patriotism. Last year, members from around the world gave over 7 million volunteer hours to our service in our communities. DAR has promoted, promoted Constitution Week since President Dwight Eisenhower signed it into law in 1956. We thank the City of Ferndale for your support. Right now, there may be women watching this meeting who knows her ancestors supported the cause for independence. We encourage her to visit dar.org to learn how she might join us. Thank you.
We're now moving on to the regular agenda. Item four, excuse me, item 8A, approval to purchase replacement leaf vacuum trailer from McQueen in the amount of $104,000. The DPW director.
Mayor and Council. So, uh, first thing I'd like to talk about for a minute is the curbside leaf collection program. Um, that kicks off the third week in October. Runs for about six weeks through the end of November. Um, and during that program, DPW collects about 10,000 yards of leaves, um, curbside on residential streets. For the first time in 2026, we'll be doing weekly service. Uh, you'll remember from the past, we would kind of start with the whole city. We'd flip-flop. So what that meant is, we wouldn't necessarily see your leaves until two weeks sometimes. So, um, this has always been what we wanted to do. This is ideally what we would like to do. We've been working to collect data and ensure that we can roll this out, uh, in a smart way, so we don't have to make a bunch of changes mid-season. And we think that we're finally there. Uh, part of the reason we're there is we're looking at replacing, um, our leaf equipment, and we've made changes and improvements to the process. So six total leaf vacs are needed. Um, I'll get into how many we have. We have four vintage units. Vintage is the nice way to put it. Um, these were ordered in the 50s, delivered in the 60s. They have been altered a lot of times since then. They have... Parts from the eighties, parts from the two thousands. Um, they're currently being worked on by a local vendor that does welding and has been doing welding on them. Tuning the carburetors for the last fifty years and eventually is going to retire and that's going to make it difficult to continue maintaining them the way that we do. Right now, we have one newer unit, just like the one we're asking for today. And it's not clear, but the second will be what we will order now if we have council approval. So, uh, we eventually would like to have four new machines as a primary. And then we would like to keep two of the older units as backups to use as needed. There's a couple of weeks, um, in the program where we're at peak season and we'll need six on the road. And it makes sense to keep our best, oldest or our best older models. Oh, and I'll just go back real quick because I forgot to mention one thing. Apologize, I'm not a graphic designer. Riley's been really busy, so this is just what I put together. This is our trash route. Only we come one day in front of the trash route. So if you're normally picked up like my neighborhood on a Tuesday, we will do it on Monday. We'll run in front of the trash routes. We're not conflicting with the trash operations. And then, um, so we'll get the road and then they'll get the road. And then there is more to it. Um, some communities run after the trash route. Um, and that makes sense for street sweeping, but for leaf season, uh, our heaviest, we didn't want to end on our heaviest day on a Friday in case we needed the rest of the week to kind of, um, pitch in and help out. Plus we have more attendance issues and I think this is true most often on Friday. So leave back comparison, why do we replace them? Simply put, we replace old machines because the new machines get more leaves in less time, they stay on the road more. Preventative maintenance is always cheaper than emergency maintenance and these are what enable us to keep up with a weekly schedule. Titan Leaf Pro Plus, you'll see over there, uh, I'm going to get into these characteristics and details a little bit. But you can see in that top right corner, other than a lot of rust, there is a rigid frame chute that can't move, whereas this one has, um, a moving arm. That little tube is flexible. There's someone sitting on the trailer and they can actually do that without a raker in most cases. So you've got a driver and you've got an operator, whereas with the old ones, you always have a driver. You always have two people, uh, but having a rigid chute means that the driver has to back up, um, and get closer to the curb, back up, get a little further from the curb. They just can't hit it like this one can. I mean, this one can go slowly at a pace, person on the controls can kind of swing it left, swing it right for bigger piles. So it's just a lot faster. So the vintage vacs, they were again assembled in the fifties and early sixties. It began as an engine, a small gas tank. There was a ninety degree chute. Um, there were, I just mentioned a ninety degree chute because there are a lot of engineering problems that we really thought of in the fifties. Ninety degrees is not something you'll ever see in a leaf vac today because you're putting a lot of extra strain and pressure on that ninety degrees. So these are all kind of, um, curved, turned into a forty five, just so that way. The debris and rocks aren't blasting through the top of the chute. And I'll mention too, that these were originally delivered on a wooden trailer, which kind of tells you how old they are. Uh, again, there's a fixed arm, but, um, all that being said, it would make sense for the city to keep the two best vintage machines as backups. And that is a testament to internal maintenance, it's a testament to our local contractor. And it is, there is an investment cost as well. We invested money in maintaining these equipment and they are still running today, which is kind of an amazing thing. The new vacs, so Titan Leaf Pro Plus, um, there's again a driver and operator in back, there's a controllable arm. And I want to mention that we looked at initially in twenty twenty two funding four consecutive purchases, um, starting in twenty twenty three. So by now we would be looking at purchasing our final. Four machines is four hundred thousand dollar investment. We weren't very familiar with Titan Leaf Pro. So we slowly, like, we just slowed the process down. Um, sometimes there is a reason for government being as slow as it is because we did not want to get in a situation where we purchased four hundred thousand dollars worth of equipment that we did not love and did not work for us. So we started with the one, we've had it for a few years now, it works, we like it. We actually had the intention of planning to purchase two now, um, that is what we got approved for in the budget. We're actually just going to purchase one now. Because there's an enclosed cab, um, unit that is potentially available next year and we'd like to purchase the one now. And then look at that one next year because the enclosed cab is just, makes it a lot easier and safer for the guys that are operating. Um, source well price, uh, as included in the agenda item, it is competitively bid, it is a hundred and four thousand dollars. Titan was, was wrapped by Bell, who has been purchased out by McQueen or a regional vendor for Titan. Uh, and then I, I think the mayor asked a couple of questions that I wanted to address. Uh, and the last time I was up here, maintenance costs, so eventually two extra pieces of equipment, so once we have six in total, we assume four to six percent of value. So approximately ten thousand, ten to twelve thousand dollars, or actually that's not right, eight to twelve thousand dollars annually over the life of the equipment is about what we would expect. And that's equalized over time. So less at the front, a little more in the middle, and then higher at the end as you're replacing more, um, expensive components. And then the last thing I will say, um, is mayor also asked how I can guarantee that this is a good fleet decision or maybe the best fleet decision. And I just want to say that it's, it's impossible to guarantee. But what I do say is that D P W approaches these decisions deliberately. We get a lot of opinions, uh, we collect a lot of data, we have a lot of communication, some of our crew members are probably, I drive them crazy how many times we talk about this stuff, but. The guys are on the road in the field, using the equipment, are truly the experts and their opinion is critical. So we look at everything, we look at that, we talk to neighbors, we never take the word of a salesperson, um, trust, maybe distrust and verify. And we make the good decisions most of the time. That is something that I can guarantee because we're serious, we're comprehensive, and we make sure that we vet all of our decisions, small to large. And that's it.
First, will you motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of, um, of a replacement leaf vacuum trailer from McQueen for a hundred and four thousand as submitted. By the D P W director.
Report. We have an individual roll call. Are we going to debate?
Debate. Let's switch seats tonight, all right? All right. I, I do have a question, James. I was just wondering, you said you wanted to wait until next year for the other, the, the, the enclosed cab? Is the price locked in or could it be something different next year?
The price will probably increase, um, for the model that we're talking about currently. I don't have an exact budget number for the option with the enclosed cab because they haven't made that available. So, but we, um, you know, I should have looked at what we paid in twenty twenty three and I think it was roughly a hundred thousand dollars. I assume three percent interest over the last couple of years. Um, and that's probably what's going to be typical for next year.
Questions? Through the chair, just two questions. The, the eight to twelve thousand dollars in annual maintenance, is that in materials for these, these leaf vacs or is that labor cost in D P W? As well as, um, I've already lost my second question. Maybe work on that one first.
So the first part, that is labor, um, cost of parts. So it's just labor and parts. And four to six percent of any equipment based on total value is what you should budget. Sometimes you do better, sometimes you do worse. So when you're doing a preventive maintenance, you will usually be closer to the four, maybe even under. If you don't, and there are times where you don't have enough mechanics in the shop, things get missed, your, uh, price gets a little higher and closer to six percent.
I remembered the second half of that question. So the, the old, uh, you know, nineteen fifties model, are we going to sell one of those? And if so, what price point do you think we're going to recoup?
I think we can. I'm, have no idea honestly what we'll get for the two. So we will have two. We have four old ones now. We have one that's barely running, um, that we've kind of used for parts as we brought in the new, uh, equipment. But we will have potentially one for parts, one that's in working order. I'm not sure what we will get for that. It's such a weird niche market. You're talking about a sixty year old piece of equipment. You may get two thousand dollars for it.
Okay.
Um, and I'll just say too, when thinking about maintenance for those old equipment, there is not really a good way to program it at this point.
We have an individual roll call please.
Kelly.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Mikulski.
Yes.
Leaksman.
Yes. A motion to approve the purchase of a replacement leaf vacuum trailer from McQueen for a hundred and four thousand as submitted by the D P W director has passed.
Thank you.
Item eight B, communication staffing levels and services plan. Lee, hi.
Hello, good evening, mayor and council. To set up. Thank you so much for having me tonight. I am here to continue the conversation that we had at the July fourteenth meeting about the communication staffing proposal. So I have a lot of information for you, a lot of data, hopefully some answers to your questions. And I look forward to, uh, kind of working through this. So. First, I'd like to start with a reminder of the communication department's mission statement. So the Ferndale Communications Department seeks to educate and inform all audiences, residents, business owners and employees, visitors and internal council and staff through communications that are authentic, inclusive, transparent, timely and necessary. And this is largely done through centralized information management. It's really important historically to communications that we are kind of a unified front when it comes to staff. It's really important to continue engaging with every department. I personally meet with them on a weekly, bi-weekly, monthly, quarterly basis. And, um, I think it really helps kind of unify our comms presence. So this is, um, kind of scratching the surface of some regular operations that the communications department does. So we have print communications, those are largely designed in-house, um, the most popular one being our quarterly print newsletter. We have seventeen editions that have been published already in the past and the eighteenth is currently in process. So it's released seasonally and, um, it does take a bit of time to publish one. It is written and designed by me and then I coordinate that printing and shipping. We also have posters, postcards, mailers, brochures, letters, signage, stickers and door hangers. We try to collaborate with D P W with the sign shop as often as we can to print them. But, you know, a large number of them, we do need to outsource the printing. Digital communications, we also design largely in-house. So we manage our ferndalemi.gov website. Uh, we manage the backend content, largely text pages, photos, you know, sort of the, the small to medium, uh, range of contents. And then we have Hadroot, who is our web company. They kind of tackle the larger coding and more, you know, extreme parts of the website. We've been with them for about three years, um, and they're really, really helpful in kind of getting us to where we need to be. Um, also social media, so communications manages the city's Instagram, Facebook, YouTube, LinkedIn, Nextdoor. And right now, um, I'm also managing the police department's Facebook, um, due to our communications liaison no longer, um, being staffed. And then, uh, communications is also an admin to the Ferndale Parks and Rec Facebook, Special Events Facebook and the Arts and Beautification Facebook and Instagram. Um, I myself have profiles in our community forums, um, as a courtesy, I'm there to, you know, help and answer questions whenever I can. And it's also really helpful for me to kind of stay in the know and see what our community is talking about. And then, uh, comms also manages the citywide email, which is information@ferndalemi.gov. Right now, uh, our assistant city manager is taking one for the team and helping me out with that. But it's a really popular form of communication that the public uses. And then community engagements, um, you know, comms likes to attend as many events as we can. We prefer that all of the photo and video content on our website be from staff. A little bit more organic that way. And then leading programs, I'm sure you don't remember me being here for ten weeks in a row talking about Fern and Learn. And then, uh, we also have been a part of the Future Leaders of Tomorrow, which involves middle and high school students. We can teach them about government. So I'm not going to go through all of these, but these are some recent, uh, important projects that communications has been really heavily involved in. I will highlight the Headley override proposals. That was probably the biggest, uh, feat in terms of communications. Going all the way back to the formation of the facilities task force all the way through post-elections communications. So, um, all of these, you know, projects you see here, um, have been a lot of collaboration between communications and many other departments. Before I move on, does anyone have any questions about these projects here? Okay. And then, of course, we have a lot of seasonal and educational items. Everything you see here is something that we know is going to be reoccurring, but it still takes its own unique communications plan going into that season. So, yeah, we have a lot of these that occur on a regular basis and it's up to us to kind of try and reinvent the wheel and correct maybe some, uh, mistakes that we've made in the past or upgrade things. We go along. Any questions here? Okay. So just a little visual break. Um, these are some designs that I have made over the last few months. Top left is the cover of the quarterly print newsletter. Bottom left is the Gary Park Skate Jam. I had a lot of fun with this one. Top middle is our snow emergency parking map. So I designed that map like by hand or by mouse rather. Every street, every line, uh, I kind of traced over and outlined and I've been able to repurpose that. So eventually, as Jim mentioned, I will get to the leaf pickup map and I will use that template to do so. Bottom middle, the open burn permit, this was a really recent one I did. The top right, hopefully not to trigger anyone, but that is the Headley override twenty twenty five postcard that we, uh, not only sent out in the mail, but it was in the newsletter and, and on a few other mediums. And then the bottom right, uh, this was a collaboration between the clerk's office, D P W and I. We rebranded all of our ballot boxes. So I designed the stickers and then, uh, D P W coordinated installing them, you know, placing them. So, um, I would like to go forward with some prospective projects and initiatives, identifying the gaps and providing some solutions. First, I would like to start with phone calls and phone navigations. I know this is something that is really important to not only you all, but to our community. So I'm taking this very seriously. So our current gaps, we have a large volume of calls, slower response times, a confusing phone tree navigation that leads to difficulty finding the correct person. So I thought it would be important to pull some call analytics, the number of calls, our current call menu order and those top categories that we receive. So the number of calls in twenty twenty four was close to sixty thousand. Um, and then so far in twenty twenty five, we have about forty one thousand. We are rounding a little bit just from a, a data gathering perspective, but it's, it's around there. I would say we are on trend to kind of reach that twenty twenty four number by the end of the year. And granted, these aren't like how many calls were answered or voicemails, it's just simply how many calls our system received. So our current call tree order, if you were to call the two four eight, five four six, two five two five line right now, um, you would hear a robot speaking to you about this particular order. So we have C E D, then D P W, finance, city clerk's office, police, H R, city manager's office and other, which eventually takes you to fire, um, and Parks and Recreation and the court, I believe. So I thought it'd be beneficial to pull the top categories that we received in terms of who is being dialed the most. And we can potentially reorder the call tree to accommodate that need. So in twenty twenty four, the top dialed menu numbers were police, then C E D, then finance, then D P W and then the clerk's office. So immediately we can see the order that we have set up is very different from our demand. So I think there's an opportunity to reorder that and hopefully help direct some calls quicker. So I would like to manually alter the phone tree. Um, our I T team has been really helpful in providing this data and we can work together, I, I can work together with them. So again, changing that menu, we also need to change the grammatical phrasing, which I know sounds really simple. But when you call the menu, the first couple have a descriptor of the topics on why you might dial that number. And then the rest are just listing the department. So I think if we consistently have a grammatical phrasing, that might be all topics, that might be more helpful than just a department name. So people can know why they would be calling that department. Um, and not to be self-righteous, but I would like to elevate the communications department's presence. In order to get to communications, you have to go two menus in. And I think that we should be at least in the first menu as sort of a, you know, resource if people don't know where to call or they want, you know, someone in the moment. I would like that to come to me and my department, um, instead of kind of getting lost in the, in the midst of everything. So if we do all these things, there is going to need to be a thorough comms investigation. I just want to make sure on all of our digital and print materials that we don't say, press option five for this department. I want that to be cohesive. And then there's also going to And then there's also going to need to be an internal and external comms process to the public and to our staff to make sure if we're changing anything, they're on board and they know kind of, you know, what the process is going to be going forward. Any questions about phones or anything?
Through the chair. Let's drill into that last bullet point about the internal, external communications process and getting the public involved. Give me, give me a sense of what you're looking for there.
The only thing I would be concerned about is if people call and they're used to the menu being a certain way and then it kind of throws them off. I think I would just like something minimal to just tell them, hey, there's going to be some minor changes. Here's what to look forward to on the new menu. Just like a tiny little heads up. So people are aware that there's going to be a change when they call.
Okay.
But I see that being more on an internal end, just to keep everyone on the same page if, if things change. But I don't see it as being too invasive.
Great.
All right. So likewise, C Click Fix is another, you know, platform that I think we have some opportunity to adjust manually. So some current gaps publicly, there's some difficulty submitting concerns, delayed follow-ups and multiple submissions for the same item. And from a staff perspective, there are some systemic functions and organizational thing, you know, processes that we can take that will help. And then there's sometimes a crossover from other comm sources. So if they're getting an email and a phone call and a C Click Fix, ideally we could find a way to maybe merge this a little bit. So again, just some data here. In twenty twenty-four, the number of requests that we received in the portal was one thousand five hundred and twenty-seven. So far in twenty twenty-five, we have one thousand two hundred and eighty-three. I thought this was interesting that both twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five are the same top five categories. So one is grass and weeds. Two is blighted property concern. Three is other. Four is legally parked slash abandoned vehicle and five is tree concern. And what interested me was that number three is other when we have a lot of other categories. So I think that kind of lens, you know, kind of tells us that we need to maybe be a little bit more specific and clarify things a bit more. So again, pulling the analytics, analyzing it from a staff and public perspective. I met with CED and DPW personally to do like a needs assessment of what they feel would work best for them. So some tangible solutions we can take, potentially recategorizing the submission steps to make things a little bit more simple. Rewriting and standardizing the canned responses that people receive when they submit a request. Right now, they're kind of all over the place grammatically and we just need them to be cohesive. Cleaning up data and some old profiles. It's more of an internal thing. Editing and altering the questions and answers. And just in general, some more supervision of the system from a comms perspective. I don't intend to disrupt any data or anything like that, but more just keeping an eye on this stuff. So we can adjust things in real time. Any C Click Fix questions?
Do you foresee that you're, that you would also help facilitate? You know, one of the complaints we get about C Click Tick on your gaps analysis is, you know, the timeliness or lack thereof in, in not only addressing them, but sometimes even just acknowledging or responding them in a way that kind of lets people know it was received, it was heard, it was seen, it was read. Do you foresee you and your team kind of having a role in helping ensure that that communication back, like we've gotten the ticket, now we're letting them know this is what's happening? You would kind of help with that and also sort of directing and making sure. Basically, I think what I'm getting to is who's going to make sure that the departments are actually responding or addressing these tickets, you know?
Yes. I, so a little bit later in this presentation, I'll kind of show you my planned like breakdown for certain tasks. And I would anticipate that the specialist, you know, prospectively would be the person to oversee that. But yes, I know that is a concern. So these are some additional prospective projects that I would like to get to, but unfortunately are a bit slow going just due to staffing. But I wanted you to still know that they're on the horizon and they're being prioritized. So the first with the website, I've sort of felt over the years that we are kind of lacking a bit of a community partnership presence. So I have reached out to the Ferndale Public Schools, the Hazel Park Schools and the Ferndale Historical Society to get a kind of minor presence on our website. But still some sort of like landing page that tells you about what they do for the community and kind of who they are and links to their own resources. So I've met with Ferndale Public Schools and they're really excited. And I am setting up meetings with Hazel Park and the Ferndale Historical Society. I've actually never been to the Historical Society, so we're going to set up a little field trip and I'm pretty excited about that. So, yeah. So boards and commissions, I really think that we need some more visibility and recognition for our board and commissions. So this is just an idea. I don't want to promise anything, but I like the idea of doing a general like Ferndale Boards and Commissions social media account. That could be kind of coordinated through the staff liaisons and a communication staff person. I think having everyone all in one place would be kind of fun. So, you know, prospective volunteers could see what everyone is doing and kind of choose accordingly. So. Policy, I really feel that we need to kind of take a look at our current comms policies existing, maybe come up with some new ones. Style guide, social media use, customer service, especially the phones. I would really want the phones to be a major focus of that. And then additional manuals and platform use. The e-newsletter, I would love to restate both of our monthly e-newsletters. We had one previously that went to the public and then we had one internally for staff. And I feel that both were really beneficial. So I would love to start those back up. And then a text system. This was, this is something I keep hearing repeatedly that our community would like. When I did Ferndalearn, that was like the number one thing that people walked away with. So I would love to do some research on this and find a system that works for everyone. Alrighty, so crisis communications, I would say arguably one of the most important factors of communications. So historically, every comms person has been on the crisis communications team, which means you're on call twenty-four seven to assist with emergencies. And right now that's me. So if there's an emergency, I have to be ready anytime, any day, anywhere to update our social media and our websites and keep people informed. We do utilize our crisis communications guide and our media kits, which is very helpful. We do kind of need to continue expanding on those. When we're in the midst of an incident, comms very quickly must become a subject matter expert. For example, I don't know a lot about chemical fires, but I must learn in five minutes and make sure that I'm working with chief and making sure it's accurate. We're, you know, doing it in a timely manner, reporting, repeating. And I've bolded this because I think it's kind of important. When a crisis occurs, all other communication matters must stop. And right now, being a staff of one, it's a bit tricky to navigate that because all the other operations are kind of sitting there until I'm able to get back to them. And during and after the crisis, we have to continue to offer information as available. Communicate to the other departments that are not in the crisis, but should know and should have an official statement. Answer questions and send more information for our staff to follow up. And then we have to be mindful of tone. We have to be sensitive and empathetic and read the room. We can't just resume our, you know, communications if it is insensitive to the tone and the vibe of the community. So that's really important to consider. So before I move on, I would actually like to invite our crisis leaders up to talk about their opinion on the PIO position. I don't want to speak for them. I'd rather them speak for themselves. So in no particular order, Fire Chief Teresa Robinson, Police Captain Casey Lachlan and Public Works Director Jim Jameson. You are welcome to say a few words.
Excuse my casual presence. You will understand why I'm wearing a t-shirt tonight. I'll explain later tonight and call the council. But as far as a PIO, one of the things I can explain is what it is. I think that's, I don't know if you guys have any specific questions for me. So I am a trained PIO and that stands for Public Information Officer. Or somebody PIO for police and fire. Somebody with the background in emergency services is critical. For instance, when we had the car that went into the building on East nine mile. I'm trying to conduct an incident and media showing up on scene one interviews. So I have to hold him at bay, then I have to step away to do interviews. And in the middle of things. So having somebody who has the background that can step in, get a quick briefing from me and then talk to the media. The background's important because for them to be able to answer questions, but also understand what is proper to say, what is not proper to say. So we don't have a misstep by well intentioned communications that turns into a big hoopla like we had in the past. So it's PIO, there's specific training for it. There's somebody goes to become certified as a PIO. But it's somebody who understands what's going on. Whether it's police, fire or even DPW. We have a severe weather emergency. Some of this impacted the community. Somebody who understands how to communicate that properly to the public. Not misrepresent anything we have going or what we're doing. And so that's kind of, because it's an art to know what to say and not to say to the media. But also phrase things in a way so that you're explaining it in terms that the community can understand and not speaking in firefighter ease or law enforcement ease and those type of things that makes sense to us, but doesn't make sense to the general public. So generally, since I've been here and even in my previous, like when unusually, if you look at a lot of communities, it's the police chief or the fire chief. When there's something that happens, that's in front of the camera, because that's who the community wants to see. So where we've used crisis communication in the past, like when we had the roof taken off of five hundred east nine mile. We obviously activated the crisis communication team. I was boots on the ground with that and communicating back. So questions came in, I was trying to feed them information. So they would know how to answer questions or at least where to steer them to. So I think that's where assistance comes in when they say, we'll be doing a press conference at such, such time. Or the chief will have a statement for you at such, such time. Or gather the questions, contact us and then be the voice back and say, okay, I've got a statement to share back to you. Because it'd be hard and where she has, I have called her and she's worked with me on some stuff, but it's hard to, I can't make her an expert in five minutes. And so she will do a great job trying to communicate what I communicate to her with that. But I think that's where, like an actual PIO has a background. And I think that's where if we're using the term for everybody to understand what that means. I'll let the captain add anything he wants to that.
Thank you, Chief. I couldn't do a better job than that. Good morning. Again, I'm sorry. Good evening, Ferndale. Mayor, members of council. The chief's completely right about the need for the PIO. What I like about the setup is it was just the police department's PIO to start. It makes a lot more sense to have it spread out across all the departments. Not just DPW and fire, but PD, but who knows who can use the clerk's office. So it seems like there's an efficiency there gained by the city. But on a whole too, with the communications department, we kind of delved into this realm about ten years ago. And we made some success and there's some things along the way. But the world of public relations and news media has grown dramatically and that's not going to change. The communications department offers the police department and other city department services that present the city in a professional and in a competent manner. The comms department doesn't just assist with press releases in today's world. Comms department assists the police department with planned events and assignments and also unforeseen and emergent events. Social, they monitor social media for us and help respond to those posts. They help us with our website design and maintenance. Also the creation of recruitment, printed materials and for other events like National Police Work Week and the Citizens Police Academy. Comms department helps broadcast the police department's community engagement events. And comms also assist in providing timely and accurate notification for unusual circumstances such as snow emergencies, warming or cooling centers, road closures and even hazardous waste incidents. Public relations, the digital media won't be getting any less complicated. The police department doesn't hire people with that skillset. The police department needs the assistance and expertise of our professional communications department. Thank you.
Thank you. So, yeah, I'll just add crisis communications is something that I see as a direct need for public services. Snow emergencies happen sometimes and we need regular communication for that. All of our projects and programs, it's important that we keep cars off the road so that way we can efficiently and safely do our job. So that is something that we really do need from comms. We had an ice storm and a tornado and I think it was actually the, not a tornado, but high wind event where both chiefs were busy. I was busy. We're working with operations, trying to restore services, trying to get roads back in order, trying to get roofs off the roads. And media is calling city hall. They're calling, looking for someone to talk to. And sometimes the chiefs are tied up with operations. I'm tied up with operations. And I'll say for myself personally, I do okay on camera here. I did some videos at the fire department. I hope no one ever sees the uncut video because I crumbled. So I do not want to be on camera anytime soon. So I would love if someone could do that for me if it ever happens. Then in general, I'll just say social media, we put a lot of stuff for programming. It is important that we get compliance is probably a little bit hard of a word to say, but we need cars off the road. We need people to understand what we're doing, why we're doing it. Trees is a good example too. Like we do a lot of social media communications because it's not always obvious or apparent why a city right-of-way tree or a park tree is coming down. We don't have, you saw my graphic design. We don't really have the staff or the talent or the time to put together something nice that says, we're going to be working on trees in Garbit Park. We love trees too. We're only taking these down so that we're protecting property and safety of the residents using the parks. And that is something that communications does for us and does well. And I'll say that also all of the proactive communication that we get from our communications department saves us time. All the social media, every time someone sees that, every time someone sees information in the newsletter, every time someone sees a graphic or a website update information, that's information that they don't have to call and talk to our CSR. And it allows Ellie to, to kind of triage and get ahead of more calls because she's not dealing with the small like, yes, this is the case. The map is on the website. Those, those like low hanging fruit. As those questions don't happen, or the only reason those questions don't happen and don't overwhelm her is because communications gets all of these things updated. And then maps, again, I'll mention that that's, that's a big thing that we need an assist with. Style guide, it seems like something small too, but if I had to create logos and letterheads for everything that I did, that would just be a waste of time because there are people that do that much better and more efficiently than I. And then I'll say C Click Fix, and I appreciate Riley not calling me out specifically, but I am one of the department heads that tried to make things better. So there is probably a reason that all of the DPW canned responses follow a weird format or if there's a format at all. And those do need to be cleaned up and without more people doing it, they're just, they're going to be imperfect. So. That's about it.
Awesome. Any follow-up questions or comments for these three?
Through the chair. I'm going to have a million questions. Should I start going through some of them now or wait until the end?
Why don't we go wait till the end and then we'll do the motion and then fire away.
All right. Well, thank you three very much. I'll let the record show. I did not know what they were going to say. So I'd not coached them or anything, but I appreciate it. I really respect these three departments so much and I look forward to a prospective position where we can all be very unified and help the city tremendously. So on that note, I have some proposed roles and responsibilities for the staffing model that is presented. Kind of a lot, I do apologize. So I guess while we're on the topic of the PIO, I will start at the bottom right in the red section. So the PIO would be the primary crisis support person. As they said, they would handle all of the media relations, whether that's behind the scenes, in front of the camera, you know, whatever the need may be. I would love to see some type of public safety rebrand. I would like to take our current police department's Facebook and turn that into a public safety, like combined account. I think that would be helpful branding for the public to just go into one space and have all the information that they need right there. So in that event, there would be some new social media accounts. I expect them to not only have training and expertise, but provided as well. Attending events, getting that coverage, getting the photo and the video and then department engagement with the four of our departments. Shifting to the other side, the specialists in the blue. As I mentioned, C Click Fix, I would like that person to be the primary person that's in the system, making sure, you know, like you said, requests are being answered. The system is functioning appropriately. I would like them to be the primary person for that. As well as the information emails. So I would expect them to handle them completely. The website, anytime that there is a website update, I would like them to be the primary person for that. If we do go the route of that boards and commissions, social media, I would like them to solely manage it. All of our print materials that we mentioned, the postcards, the door hangers, et cetera, I would like them to manage. I would like them to manage that. Overall, department engagements and crisis support in the sense that if there is a crisis, they would be the person keeping the department afloat. Between the two, I do expect collaboration, I expect photo and video sharing, designing, writing, you know, however they see fit, whatever their skills and their strengths are. Moving up to between the manager and the PIO, together we would do crisis management, update our plans and policies, set up media training for staff. This is something that we've been talking about for quite a while. So I would love to get this set up so that in the event staff needs to be interviewed, we are all properly trained. And then continually updating that crisis communications guide. You know, that's not a document that will sit for eternity, it's one that consistently needs work. Shifting over to the manager and the specialist, tackling that phone tree is absolutely a top priority for me. I would expect them to be trained on all of our city platforms from, you know, MailChimp to Survey Monkey to Canva, everything else we use. And then working on the city's social media together. The manager, which is my perspective role, working on policy, training and educating, supervising and managing our new employees, you know, updating the style guide, centralizing communications, working on those community partnership website updates, perspective welcome packet, the newsletters and that textism. And then in the middle, we all are going to be consistently having access and working on the website, social media, newsletters, customer service, event attendance, crisis comms, internal comms and community engagement. And yeah, I would expect this for sure by six months into the format. Let you digest that unless you have any questions.
Let you continue and then we'll.
Okay. So next, I know one of the things we're waiting for here is data provided by neighboring cities. So as requested at the July meeting, you know, there was a need to reach out to other cities to kind of just see how we compare, benchmarking, all sorts of things. So I reached out to 12 cities as well as SEMCOT because I wanted to get a really large overview on different populations, how, you know, communications is structured and all that. So I'm going to start with the cities that are kind of closest to us in population. We have Hazel Park, Berkeley, us in the center, Birmingham and Madison Heights. So the way I set up these interviews is that, you know, I told them, I kind of want to break it down into some easy categories that could be outsourced if we go that route. So I wanted to kind of make it simple and break it out in, you know, typical things that we do and with some opportunities to change if needed. So largely across the board, every city manages their website or at least co-manages it. Every city has social media accounts and then kind of a varied e-newsletter, print newsletter, print, you know, calendar, things like that. So I'm happy to leave this and then I do have more on the next slide as well.
Through the chair, Riley, which of these, did you identify which ones have a PIO?
No, not specifically. A lot of them, they only like included their communication staff. So I assumed any PIOs were not a part of, like under that umbrella.
Okay.
A lot of them said that they would just work with police or fire as a department. Are we okay to move on? There's some more cities, obviously, as you can see, a huge jump in population, but I still was just interested kind of as I went on, how people structure their department and what priorities they have. So I'll get to this in a little bit, but largely the trend I found of items that are outsourced, it was very consistently a print newsletter or a print equivalent. But I'll get more into that in a little bit. Just wait until we're done looking. So next is SEMCOT, which is the southeastern Michigan Coalition of Governments. I know this is a little irrelevant to what we're talking about here, but I just thought it would be interesting to see how an entity like that structured their communications. So they have a population of nearly 5 million. They have a staff of five people full time. They have five accounts that are managed by the staff communications. They have a bi-weekly e-newsletter, additional email blasts as necessary and then various reports and plans. They manage their websites and they sort of felt that they were neutral in between the in-house and the outsourcing model, just given, you know, how large their organization is. So some pros and cons that I gathered from my interviews with the different cities. Some in-house pros, it was largely favorable across the board. Pretty much every city had a preference to have some degree of in-house operations, if not solely. It helps keep communication centralized, it retains our brand, tone and style consistency. It establishes relationships with the community and maintains trust as well. In-house cons, costs, you know, I feel, I put that on both sides because that was sort of a conversation on both sides. And then of course, the hiring process, the training period, the role simulation, some time. Outsourcing pros, it provides kind of immediate assistance. It in theory can be a time saver. The only concern is just kind of managing that, but you know, overall it definitely would save some time. We have field experts facilitating the projects with personalized care and there's organized deadlines as well. So outsourcing cons, cost, again, that worry of just additional management needed kind of loses that authentic community feel, not assimilated into city culture and then kind of attaching our name to a company. So yeah, that was just a concern from some folks. So a special consideration that I, I guess would like to talk about, and I know you might like to talk about too, is the print newsletter. In the report, we have a few proposed changes. So there are opportunities to reduce the page count, reduce the frequency, lower the page quantity or quality rather. And then some alternatives or additions, we have that e-newsletter that we can reinstate. And I've also had an idea for a long time to do a welcome packet that I would love to, you know, have for new residents. I think maybe there can be some type of happy medium where we can mix like a newsletter and a welcome packet and an annual report and kind of find, you know, a happy medium to combine all of these projects, if that would help. And then lastly, I guess I'm going to share my opinion, which makes me really uncomfortable because I am not, I don't usually do that. But I really feel that this model that we've presented to you is preferred for the city and just for communications in general. I definitely prefer in-house staffing. I think it helps with our community and really everything in the pros section. I think it really would help unify everyone, staff and public included. If outsourcing is preferred and it's the route that you all would like to take, I would recommend starting with the print newsletter. I think that is something that could be probably the most negotiable in terms of format, as you can see on the last slide. So I'm open to exploring options there. I would like to maintain the current comms standards while also expanding and evolving. I want to maintain and expand the relationships with the community. Trust is a top priority for me in the department. I heard this quote at a conference I was at last week and said, content shouldn't compensate for absence. And to be honest with you, I feel like we're kind of getting there just as a department of one right now. And communications equals care, that's, that's what I'm here for, that's what comms is here for. I just kind of, just want to make Ferndale a better place, you know? So that's what I got. And I'm here for any questions or concerns.
Motion and then we'll have discussion. I move to adopt the revised communication staffing level and services plan as presented and backfill the positions as recommended by the city manager.
Support.
Discussion. So I appreciate you putting all this together. And I think, I think you've done just a very tremendous job of disseminating the information, making it digestible. I, I have questions that I would actually like to ask of the police and fire chiefs. I know our police chief is not here, but Captain, if you wouldn't mind answering some of those questions? So currently, can you let me know who handles crisis communications in your department? So press inquiries, media, resident updates, is it primarily in-house?
Depends on the circumstances, of course, the first answer and most correct answer would be the chief. Sometimes when things happen, it's going to be the on-duty command officer. If the longer something unfolds, it's going to end up being the chief.
Okay. Do you have crisis communications training? Are you a PIO? Some?
I'm not trained as a PIO.
Okay. Is the chief trained as a PIO?
I think he went to a school.
I'm, I will take that as a tentative yes.
I mean, it's also a perishable skill if you're not using it often.
Sure. And Chief Robinson, same question?
I would add, there are certainly times when whatever event happens or certain events happens that the community would rather hear to, would rather hear from the person in the uniform. But even then, PIOs under one incident, there was a PIO there who provided a lot of advice and wisdom about how to handle it. So even though that PIO wasn't on the camera, they helped facilitate the process so smoothly.
That's interesting. Let's dig into that for just a moment. Was that a Ferndale city employee?
Oh.
Okay. Was that within this city? Was it an outsourced solution?
It was, a PIO belonged to another law enforcement agency.
Okay. And do we have community partnerships that we could potentially leverage that involve a PIO?
Possibly. You know, some of these police events are different and unfold under an unknown timeframe. So the way that one unfolded, it had time for other resources to come in to assist. That particular resource would generally not be available for 95% or 98% of incidents in Ferndale.
Okay. I'm sure I will have some, but I'd like to hear from Chief Robinson very quickly. So Chief, same question. Are you currently handling crisis communications within your department?
Yeah, so for the most part, I know Riley's been trying to change it a little bit. But when I first came here, the fire department was, we were 100% on our own for all our communications. We didn't have the comms support. And that's not a secret to anybody. Riley's been trying to build that bridge to provide us more support on the regular, but when it's comms, like I'm the one that's going to be in front of the camera. So like even when we had the car in the building, I was still the one doing the media interviews. I just had to ask them to wait till I handled the situation before I got in front of the camera. And so it's like, even though we kind of had a PIO resource, because it's the city, they weren't on scene. And I think, and I agree, media wants the uniform. But also people with emergency services background, you don't necessarily know what questions the media is going to ask. So you have to have the knowledge, understanding of the situation to be able to field the questions. Otherwise, if you don't, like I could prep Riley with what I think they are and so I could give her information and she could answer and say, this is the statement I have provided or I have available to me. But if they have follow-up questions, it puts her at a disadvantage where she can be like, I don't know, I'm going to have to get back to you. And that can rub media the wrong way because they have deadlines and they have stories. So I try to proactively think about anything if I can't step away at the moment and I need somebody else to, but it doesn't, you know, like we found out once before, that didn't turn out very well. So it's, because it's unfair, it's like when she doesn't have train, it's like trying to not set her up for failure. I want to make sure she's set up for success. So right now we do, like when we, when I got here, all media interviews are me. Even, I know you guys have been seeing me a lot, I have media that calls me a lot, says, hey, we need statements, this, we need that, and I do it. They'll call me 30 minutes later during my fire station. So it's, and then even a lot of our non, you know, crisis communications, we don't have huge events that often. When they happen, they can be very time consuming, they can be very critical. Sometimes we need communications out there quick. I think a partnership with communications is important because sometimes we need to say, hey, we get a, needing a message out there, tell the community to stay away from this area. Even if they can't get any other information, it's like if we can avoid people coming in there and for them to understand, you know, us to have a partnership in crisis communication. But I, I don't know if it could be successful to fully hand out to somebody that's not emergency services. That's why when this brought up before, the background of a person, if we did go this route, would be critical. Because otherwise, we're going to put somebody in a position that's not really going to have the the knowledge, skills and experience to fulfill all the roles that we need if it's truly supposed to be standing in for me and the other chief. So that's where I think it, partnership and support. Like you said, media wants to see us there. If it's a big fire thing, they want to see the fire chief. A big police event, they want to see the police chief.
Who's your backup? If, if we were in a situation where we, where we needed somebody, who would be your backup?
I haven't had one up till now. I, that's why I did a media interview for my son's wedding. I've done a lot of things from other states and offsite because I didn't have a backup.
And typically would that be?
Sometimes I'll have like other fire chiefs step in for my fire department when I'm gone. If I, you know, assistant chief, having Schwalter, I could, he's only part-time, 24 hours a week because, you know, that's what I'm funded for. You know, get him the PIO training, he's not PIO trained, to feel comfortable in front of the camera. Other than that, I don't, I don't have somebody.
Typically, would it be your assistant chief, it would be your backup for a PIO?
Yeah, that'd be a typical model across departments across the state and the country.
Okay. If you had to quantify how much time you were spending in crisis communications on a monthly basis, what would that look like in terms of hours?
I mean, some months, it could be 0% because it could be a month that there's no big crisis happens. You could have a month, another month, you know, like that one year we had back-to-back severe weather incidents. So there's a little bit more. And sometimes we have some crisis communications that aren't about our community. Like when McCombe had the flooded streets, they needed somebody to do an interview. So like, you know, CBS called me and said, hey, we want, because they want somebody in uniform to get in front of the cameras. So they showed up and I did an interview about, don't drive your cars into flooded waters. So it's like those things pop up, but it's in the single percentage, even on a busy month probably.
Okay.
For true crisis, I mean, not like proactive, trying to be preventative and on the front end of like heat waves, communicate to people to help keep them safe on the front end.
Right.
So if you include that in crisis communication, certain times a year, but a lot of this stuff can be pre-planned.
Is that typical of a PIO responsibility to do that proactive, you know, this is a heat wave, let's get it out to social media sort of communication?
I don't know if it would have to be a PIO, because a lot of that stuff is pre-canned.
Okay.
And when you're looking at a lot of, and I don't know about the law enforcement, they'll have to speak on that side and the fireside, there's national campaigns where the social media stuff already created, so it's really plug and play. You can just grab, adapt a little bit for your community. Or we work with comms and we want, sit down one time and they do a great job designing something. So when it come up, they pull it off and kind of plug it back in. So it's, the information is the information. So it can be, here's, don't forget, he waves, you know, water your paths and all those things, so. And she might be able to speak on that, maybe there's more to it. But my understanding, I worked with them before, it's, once we create, it's kind of plug and play each time. And like I said, there's, on the fireside, we have a lot of national organizations that create the social media campaigns to be able to just use them.
Since I'm bow guarding it, does anybody want to ask questions before I go into the rest? Some additional questions? This would be for both the captain as well as the chief. Do you believe that a PIO role would realistically require 40 hours per week for crisis communication specific tasks? Joint between the two of you.
I mean, crisis, crisis specific, there's not 40 hours work. That's where it'd be, what other job responsibilities that person is doing? Because I know from the fireside, there's not that much crisis communication that has to go out on a weekly basis. There could be zero hours going to that this week. Then we might have stuff coming in next week that we, you know, there's, you know, a little bit of work, we're pushing something out. Or we could have a big. Or we could have a big extended hazmat event that expense past the day and that week they might be on my side for eight, 10, 12-hour day. Like, but that would be an incident. So it's, when those occur, it could be a long period of time, but for most stuff, it wouldn't be. Now, if they're handling all of our non-emergency and non-crisis communications and helping with our updates and social media and things like that, flesh out. I know she's been working with my staff and I think Kiana's been helping her. My admin assistant puts, she meets and they work together. We develop a lot of stuff, push it to Riley to push out. So we've been trying to do partnerships that way to help her with the workload. And she can speak how that's working, but we've been developing a lot of stuff in-house and just giving it to her to polish, make sure it's in line with the city's template and, you know, in line with the communication. So again, that one voice, and then she takes care of pushing, you know, pushing it out.
Chief made a lot of good points that would apply to the police department as well. To answer your question, no.
I like simple questions like that, simple answers. Do we, and I guess this is a broad question, and maybe this is a question for you as well, Riley. Do we think that we could get P I O training for department heads? And Jim, I know you don't want to be on camera. I don't foresee you being on camera a ton, but is this something that's available through, you know, our municipal resources? Can, can we leverage that to have people trained internally as P I Os?
That's a great question. I am not familiar with P I Os specifically, but I know in the past, we've explored media training, which is, which would be consistent, I assume for everyone here, to at least kind of help with that. But as far as a P I O-specific one, I'm not sure, but I can look into it for sure.
And I'm so glad that you brought this up. So I, I think this is phenomenal. I can absolutely see your vision for you as the manager of the department. I think it's perfect. It's where we need to go, analyzing data, analyzing the phone tree, organizing things, looking at what was done previously with our communications policies and updating it to present day and making sure that we adhere to it, because I know that there are some that we just don't. I can absolutely see the utility of the specialist, especially because they would be the primary on the see, click, fix. They're manning a lot of the print material, taking some of that load off of you and doing website things and socials. For me, the, the difficult part of this is, as important as I see crisis communications being, I believe that we have the resources with our subject matter experts. If they were properly trained, if they have the right kind of support, if they have the right kind of templates to quickly implement. Where I don't see the need for a P I O to have a certain responsibility is things like new social media accounts, event attendance, things like that. That feels like a filler for a, what I'm hearing is a typical P I O. Are those things that could be absorbed potentially by the specialist or have a shared capacity between you and the specialist?
Yeah, I mean, I think as far as like my workload and I guess what I would envision with a specialist, we would definitely need to do like a needs assessment. Obviously, crisis is primary, so that would, you know, take up definitely a lot of space in the, in the schedule. But I don't know that I'd be able to make everything else, you know, between the two of us work. Yeah, it would just be a tough, we would just kind of have to figure things out. But yeah, I mean, we're definitely, as far as crises, I think we all work really well together. And I will say, I know this red section of the circle is definitely not inclusive of everything they said. Yeah, I mean, we could, we could find a way to make it work, but I think for me, I would still prefer that the departments have their own person who is trained, but also, yeah, can also do this part. Because I feel like if that is its own thing, then we can prioritize between the specialist and the manager everything else that I feel pretty strongly about. Sorry, that was kind of rambling, but.
No, I, I think I, I think I'm picking up what you're putting down.
Yeah.
Look back at my colleagues again and ask if you all have questions.
I just want to ask. You probably mentioned this, but you talked about so much, so.
Sorry.
Regarding the newsletter. So you said some of the ways in which you would kind of decrease the cost of that was to decrease the number of pages, the format, I guess, the glossiness. What else did you say?
Yeah, I mean, those are, those are options for sure. With the page count specifically, our current newsletter format is increments of four pages. So right now, we do 16, that would go down to 12, which is kind of a big jump, but I don't know, it's just something how the printing is structured. So, you know, with lower pages, that means less space for departments, which, you know, we could, we could find a way to work around that. The frequency, I think, the best case scenario would be three times a year. I agree with two times a year that we might lose that upcoming direct content with dates and things like that. I just don't know if annual would serve the purpose that this is meant to. And also, we can lower the page quality. At the last meeting, we gave you a sample of that and I can absolutely go find that for you again. But yeah, some alternative additions. I really like to reinstate the e-newsletter. We had a couple thousand subscribers on it. I think email is kind of somewhere in that middle ground between print and like Facebook. I think more people have access to email. And then I also had the idea for a welcome packet that I would like to do. We could also maybe merge this with like annual reports and kind of, you know, form the newsletter all into one thing, something that we put out annually.
I really appreciate the thought you put into this as well as you wanting, you having such big goals to kind of increase our customer service and our outreach to the community. I know it's been a problem over the, over some time, I've heard the complaints, I've read the complaints. And I just really, I think that, I, I like your vision, you have a vision. And what you're asking right now is that in order to fulfill that vision, you need some help.
Yeah.
All right. Regarding the newsletter, you said if we even went to buy it twice a year, could the e-newsletter kind of come in and kind of be a filler for that somehow?
Yeah, absolutely. We did the e-newsletter monthly. We can always do like bi-weekly, you know, whatever format we see fit, but yeah, absolutely. I, I could totally see that.
And the cost again for that is for the newsletter?
Could I refer to my city managers on this, please?
Yes. So are we talking about additions, frequencies? We have on page 18 of the report, breakout of possible scenarios. I think what we anticipate is best-case scenario, we're saving about $9,660 if we go down to four editions at eight pages. But equally realistic is three editions at 12 pages, which would be a cost savings of $16,125 annually. Just pondering. And that's without any changes to the page quality, but we determined that's only about a $2,500 savings per year. So you could plus or minus that.
Holly, out of curiosity, are you a trained P I O?
I'm not, but I'm looking up the FEMA's instructional courses now. It does look like there's courses available. They vary in intensity level. There's some basics courses that are about three days long, but to be a certified P I O through FEMA, it looks like a few weeks of classes.
Yeah. It's, it's interesting, this discussion. At one point, I was going through FEMA training in a past life and really focused on crisis communications with the intent of becoming a P I O. So it's, it's near and dear to my heart. So please, please don't take the line of questioning as aggressive, even though it can sometimes lean into that.
All good.
Who provides that training for P I O, does SimCOG? FEMA is what I found. FEMA does? Well, because I just noticed that something came through FEMA regarding SimCOG offering a crisis management training for local leaders. That's why I was asking, do they also provide that?
Chief Robinson said Michigan State Police.
Michigan State Police, okay.
The SimCOG course is good.
I think it's important to, to, like, because I don't want to, there's, I think there's different types of P I Os. And I think depending on the size of the city and the needs of areas, you might see this. Sometimes you have, like you take Lance in the capital city or Detroit or right up in somewhere better city, you may have a P I O for like the mayor's office or state council that's dealing with like big city communications, somebody who's trained to stand in front of the camera, talk to media, understand how to field those questions properly. So you don't create miscommunications or things that create issues and now you're doing more damage control. So I think there's P I Os that are kind of governmental or even like for businesses, industries, you know, GM or large industries like that may have P I Os to speak when there's conversations that need to happen with media. So to keep it in context, as far as what the intent is, if you're talking about specifically for emergency services and DPW, because I can't include in that because we do a lot of so much stuff together when things are happening. Just understand there's like outside of knowing how to properly communicate with reporters, you need to have, like for myself, I can stand up on emergency services theme and speak, but if it's something that's related to a DPW emergency.
Sure.
I'm going to have to grab Jim and say, okay, I need, if you don't want to get in front of the camera, I need you on my side, so at least you could whisper in my ear and that'll, you know, I mean, because I, there's things I know and there's a lot that I don't know. And I think when we're put in a position where we're speaking on something we don't know, we don't know. So I might well intentionally say something and he's looking at me like, what did you just say? And I wouldn't understand that what I just said was wrong or incorrect or creating more problems. And that's where I go back to having the person, if we did a P I O here, if they're intentionally for emergency services, we need to make sure they have the background so that if they're standing up, I have a hazmat situation, they understand what's going on. So they don't miscommunicate like we, if we're well-intentioned, but we don't know, we don't know. And you put out a headline that we have toxic gases in the air and created quite a stir. So after an incident, I had about eight hours of damage control I did for the rest of my night. And again, it was no fault of the person, they were trying to do the right thing. But again, don't know how to scrub that information. And it was, I didn't realize I needed to have a filter because I was speaking very just, here's what we got really quick on managing a scene, forgetting that, not realizing what the product might be generated from that conversation. So it's learned for me, but I think that's where we have to understand what the needs of the city and for our city, who is best positioned to fill the different gaps and the communication needs that we need.
Yeah, and that's just you to share with the body here. That's where I'm at with this. We have some fabulous subject matter experts at our disposal. I think that I, broadly speaking, I support having a specialist. You need relief, that is abundantly clear. You have done an amazing job holding it together and still maintaining a vision of the evolution of the department and focusing a lot of that vision on customer service, which we need. So I support that. I just don't see a quantifiable reason to have a full-time dedicated person in a P I O position. And especially knowing that we have, we have a P I O for her department. I would love to see Chief Robinson have an assistant chief who was full-time instead of having a P I O so that she could have some relief as well. I, I don't know if Emmy is a P I O currently, but I would assume he is. And I would assume, I would assume that whoever his assistant chief is going to be would also have that background and have that communications training. And then DPW, quite frankly, I just don't need you on camera on a regular basis. The media, when the media is reaching out, I'm pretty sure that we will be able to have it covered. Also, our city managers at our disposal, as well as our assistant city manager. Adding in an additional full-time headcount for this kind of dedicated position, I just, I can't support that. I can support everything else, I can support your vision, and I can support having somebody who would support you.
I, I will note, prior to the P I O position being created, there was a full-time police officer position that was assigned to those duties. I would be remiss if we didn't mention that fact. I know Chief Emmy was very passionate about the switch from it being an officer-controlled communications plan to someone who was more specialized in communications. That being said, I kind of hear what's being discussed tonight and I don't want to keep Riley waiting. So if there's not consensus around the P I O position, I would recommend we at least take action on the communications manager and the communications specialist position and then discuss the P I O again when Chief Emmy can kind of speak to the history of that position.
So if, if it's just you and a specialist, what does that mean for, I mean, obviously giving you any relief is something, but I, we have to think long-term. So getting you another person right now gives you relief in the short term. But considering all of the, your vision and it's ambitious and, you know, I'll be thrilled if you can get 75% of it now, because we're all human. You know, getting a second person will help, but over the longer term, is you and one person going to be enough to keep up with all this? Especially if comms is going to be taking on things like see, click, fix and things like that. And so I'm wondering, you know, if we're going to forego a P I O, and I, I've never really heard of like department directors taking on the role of P I O as part of their job responsibility. I mean, they have media training, but they're not usually the immediate go-to, but we can make it work. But I'm wondering if there isn't some other position, even if it's not in the comms team or something that would offer the support on things like see, click, fix and, and sort of the traffic, air traffic control, kind of a little bit? So that Riley and the specialists are doing, let's call it the meteor parts of comms and work. Whereas, you know, if we don't need a higher-level P I O, is there some other solution instead? Or are you, do we feel like right now, we only really need a comms team of two, plus the cross-training for our, our directors or Sneeze who are on-call, plus obviously our city and city manager, assistant city manager? Is the sense that two is adequate staffing for communications? Or is it just the nature of the staff proposed?
So I think, and if I may, I think that there is validity in your line of thought. I think that in agency life, we would be looking at like a coordinator, somebody who's going to be, you know, going back and forth between departments, fetching information, doing very low-level work that helps the higher-level specialists move forward with their vision. I wonder if there is, first of all, capacity to move forward with these two. Maybe take a phased approach where we revisit this and see how things look, but also potentially leverage, we used to have partnerships with U of M where they would come in and help do some assessments and help do some of the things to move our visions forward. They, the reason I know is because they did Ratchat, they took my app and converted it into a text messaging system for the city. Can we potentially leverage another resource to help ease this transition and then reassess at that six-month mark or even potentially a year later? Just so we can get a feel, get a lay of land with a support person alongside you and then see where we go.
So I really like that idea. I was thinking about this last week at the Friend of Historical Society board meeting. We were discussing sort of the need for additional volunteers or people who could help out with dealing with things. And I pointed out something that, you know, we have at the city of Detroit and other larger cities is you have like fellows, people who are grad students in a program or doing something like that. And, you know, they come in and they do sort of like a term where they're offering their skillset, their knowledge. They're, you know, more qualified and do- Um, they're, you know, more qualified and, and do a lot more responsibilities than just like an intern. Um, and so sort of like a fellowship program and, you know, with the Historical Society, I was talking about, you know, why don't we bring in students at the library schools? They can come in and help. It's, you know, it's sort of, you might even get fieldwork credit if you need it for one of your courses. And it's a similar model that I was thinking about for us too. It's sort of like, are there gaps, are there places in our operation where we could say, why don't we bring in these like really well-performing like graduate students who have this knowledge and maybe they do need a semester? You know? In a, in a government or doing a role and they get credit and we get the benefit of their talents, their skills. Um, with, for a far lesser cost. I mean, they're paid, but they're not, it's, you know, it's not like $48 an hour kind of day. Um, and so I was thinking that as like a gap filler mechanism for us as well. Cause we definitely utilize mayoral fellows aggressively. And then often we hire from that pool. So often like, like two members of my current staff at work are former fellows in the office. Because they performed really well, they were really great. We stayed in touch after they left and then we had vacancies, they applied. I had already, I'd experienced the work product, I knew who they were. And so they were very logical people to kind of create like a candidate pool for our own positions and stuff. So I've been kind of thinking about that as well.
I'm looking at the overlap here, uh, regarding manager and specialist and then someone kind of absorbing the PIO. And I, I like your idea, Nani, about the, the students. How would this work for you, Riley and specialist? Because when I look at this, when I look at this model, I think, you know, at one point you were kind of doing this already when it was you and Kara. Correct? Um, so. How do you feel like, I, I want to hear from you. How do you feel like this would work for you?
This current model?
Taking on the role?
Yeah, I mean.
Minus, you know, us, we're getting more information regarding the PIO, PIO information.
Specifically, how would I do that with the manager?
That's what I want to hear.
I mean, I, I've been here six years. I've learned so much from previous staff and, and I love the way our department is set up and I will absolutely carry some of that with me. But I do think that we're like in a new era. We have, uh, you know, new, a new vision, we have new policies. I, I really want to kind of start fresh to a certain extent. Um, and I think that, I, I love the idea of having a specialist. I think, um, that is clear for me in terms of a vision of how I could see myself managing them. Um, so I think that would work really well for the workload I'm currently balancing, um, to have that. So, and I, I look forward to supervising someone. I think it'd be kind of fun to be honest with you. So I'm, I'm excited about that opportunity.
I would say, looking at this from a high-level management perspective, the areas that I would kind of red flag in my mind to be watching. Uh, I think you're gonna, if we don't have a PIO position full-time or at least a part-time capacity, that is going to put a strain on the specialist position, particularly related to social media management and content creation for those departments. We did kind of configure this that the PIO would have some overlap and support. And that the specialists would be able to free up their time to do more of the phone tree, the call answering, the direct resident communication piece. Uh, where if they get sucked into social media, which can be a beast on its own for all of our departments, that might, uh, chip into the time that we had allotted for how that position breaks out for the specialists. That, that's the red flag that I would watch in my mind. Uh, I can see that being very time-consuming for two people. Um, so as we're looking at the PIO duties, if those are going with the departments themselves as well, what does that look like? Um, because this is what a PIO is configured as within the current construct of our organization. Not just crisis comms.
Through the chair, but could we, um, could Chief, um, Emmy replace the person in his department, that part-time person? And would that fill that gap and?
So he did not, he, I mean, he had previously had, he had a full-time PIO in his department. Um, and prior to that, they had a police officer. Uh, police officer will be far more expensive than a PIO would be. And to Chief Emmy's previous points, I don't want to speak for him, but in his communications with me, uh, he indicated a stronger preference for that not being a uniformed officer, but someone who was a communications professional. Um, because the skills just didn't overlap in between, you know, the officers that he was hiring and bringing on. And that community-focused kind of presentation material.
Was Evan full-time? I thought he was part-time.
He was full-time.
Through the chair, again, I, I think this is good. Manager and specialist, I support. PIO, I would like to table. I would like to move this forward. Um, what does that mean in terms of our suggested action?
So you can make an amended motion, um, and ask for a second to amend a motion to, you know, acknowledge the plan and, uh, support the backfilling of the communications manager and communications specialist position.
Before that happens though, I, I want to, are you? Shoot, I hate it when that happens, okay. With this PIO position, uh, considering that we're kind of going back and forth regarding this position in particular. Would, even if it's something that we did try to attempt, would it, would, would it send the wrong message if, you know, we have this person in place and then decide we don't need this person?
Or a PIO?
Right, that, that's what I'm thinking. I'm listening to the, the, what I've heard as far as the need for it. But if it is a position that is not going to remain, how are we even going to recruit for it? If we?
Yeah, I would not, and that's, that's why at this point, if there's not consensus from the council to move forward with that position, it does not make sense for us to post the PIO until we know that it is going to be a permanent position, whether in a full-time, part-time capacity, uh, within this organization.
The part-time is a option.
Yes, I would say part-time is an option.
Um, if I may add one more thing, um, just want to keep the, um, expectations laid out. Um, without the PIO, I would probably absorb all that, the crisis needs. Um, I know, you know, our departments have their own operations, but, um, that may then maybe trickle some things down or off of the, the diagram, just pending, uh, the need for that. So I just want to set that expectation just in case, um, you know, there's, there's crises that might push things around.
Are we looking to table this until the chief comes back or what are we thinking?
I think I'm going to amend my motion and I think we can adopt the communications plan with everything but the PIO. And then the PIO conversation is something that we can continue to have and noodle on.
Yeah, I don't think there needs to be a formal tabling of the PIO position, just an amendment to acknowledge, um, two, not three positions as recommended.
Is that your formal amendment?
I'm about to make my formal amendment, yeah. Um, so I'm going to, I will amend my motion, uh, to adopt the revised communications staffing level and services plan as presented. And backfill or
Fill.
Fill, um, only the manager and specialist positions. Yeah, that's good enough.
Support.
Johnson.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
McCoskey.
Yes.
Leaks May.
Really great presentation.
Oh, thank you. I appreciate that. It was my first one, so I'm here for it.
Very good.
And, uh, just to you, Riley, I really want to hear, uh, moving forward, how this is working for you. Because, you know, we care about, we care about you and, and your ability to be able to handle things, you know, you, you've taken on a lot. So please let us know. Okay. All right. Goodness, do we have anything else? Okay. All right. And now it's called council where, uh, I'm going to defer to the city manager for department head updates.
Clerk's office.
Um, just a couple of things. Uh, first, a reminder that in recognition of the start of Rosh Hashanah, uh, the second city council meeting this month will occur on September 29th. Uh, the fifth Monday of the month rather than the fourth Monday. Uh, so again, September 29th is the next city council meeting. Uh, that's all on our website. Uh, the other thing is that the city clerk's office is planning on mailing absentee voter ballots, uh, for the November election to anyone who has requested them. Uh, either the 23rd or the 24th of September, uh, which will be that Tuesday, Wednesday of that week. So you should probably see absentee ballots by the end of that week. Um, if you still want absentee ballot, you most definitely can still request it. Uh, the easiest way to do it is just going to mi.gov/vote. And on the upper left-hand corner, it says request an absentee ballot online. Uh, and you have all the way until October 31st at 5:00 PM to do it online. Otherwise, if you want to come into our office, you have until 4:00 PM on the Monday prior to the election, uh, just to pick one up and we can hand you that ballot that same day. Thank you.
Parks.
Good evening, mayor and council. There's a handful of items for us to update you on today. Uh, of course, we have our fall festival upcoming. That is our biggest event of the year annually. It will take place on October 4th at Martin Row Park from 11:00 AM to 3:00 PM. We'll have a bevy of different, uh, opportunities for activities and games and everything that will include hayrides, pony rides, bounce houses, pumpkin painting, carnival games and much more, including some additional surprises that we'll be announcing at a later date. Uh, it is $8, uh, to purchase a wristband ahead of time before October 1st, after October 1st. And at the door, it will be $10 per person. Uh, we encourage everybody to register as, uh, early as possible. We like to get a good headcount of the number of people that will be coming. And it frees up the line so that you're not waiting around all day for us to enter your credit card information as you go to register for the event. Uh, we are out, also actively seeking volunteers. Uh, we need people to do various things from assisting with setup and cleanup, uh, or operating different games tables, assisting our, uh, our, uh, participants as they navigate through the different things that we have available and so on and so forth. Anybody that is interested in volunteering can contact us at the front desk, uh, at recreation@ferndalemi.gov or at 248-544-6767. Aside from that, we are happy to announce that, uh, we have our aquatics classes that will be starting up later this month. Uh, we have water aerobics that'll be taking place in, on Saturday mornings. And then adult learn to swim classes that'll be taking place on Saturday afternoons. Those begin on September 20th and it is a six-week session, uh, for each of those activities. Uh, the water aerobics class will be $72 per session and the adult learn to swim, swim classes will be $46 per session. Uh, we also wanted to give a shout-out to, uh, US Master Swimming, which provided a grant. They made it possible for us to give these, uh, uh, classes, especially the adults to learn, the adult learn to swim classes. Uh, and thank you to them. We are currently seeking sponsorships and donations for our Harding Park, uh, skating rink project. Uh, for those that are unaware, we are over, plan, we have plans to overhaul the skating rink at Harding Park and, uh, replace it with a new infrastructure, uh, that will be, uh, more updated and more able to handle the rigors of the day-to-day use of that amenity. Uh, we have already secured a sponsorship from DNR in the amount of $100,000. We are looking for an additional $100,000 to, uh, supplement the, uh, match requirement for that particular project. Uh, the donations and sponsorships that we're requesting, they range from $25 to $10,000. Uh, and they come with a variety of different, uh, um, benefits per sponsorship level. So anybody that is interested or, uh, would like more information, please contact our director, Lorena Wheeler, at L Wheeler@ferndalemi.gov. And then, uh, lastly, our senior department wanted me to make sure that I let people know that, uh, the upcoming downtown train station, uh, trip that we have scheduled for 9/25, uh, it is starting to fill up. Though we are doing that in partnership with Clausen and Pleasant Ridge and all of those spots are starting to fill up. But anybody that is interested in going on the trip anyway, please make sure to add your name to the waitlist. Sometimes spots do open up, uh, when people back out and when people, uh, don't need them anymore. Uh, so we'll go by the waitlist to fill, backfill those spots should, uh, any of them open up. Uh, if you have any other questions or concerns about that, please contact us at the front desk or visit the website for more information. That's it.
Fire.
All right, so good evening, mayor and council. I will explain my very casual attire tonight. Um, so September is Suicide Prevention Awareness Month. And in the fire service, suicide rates among firefighters, the first responders is alarmingly high. So across, this is the, called the Yellow Rose Campaign. We are a participating fire department. So I do purchase one T-shirt for each of my firefighters each year. We are one, this campaign goes across Michigan and across the country. These T-shirts, which I'll show you in the back. They are generic, they do not have Ferndale on them intentionally. And it's to send the message that we stand united against raising awareness and stopping the stigma and showing our support for firefighters, first responders across the disciplines to know it's okay to not be okay and step up and ask for help and get help. So this month, you'll see my firefighters wearing these shirts on duty. They're approved to wear them as their uniform. And it's really a, a way of us showing support and standing united to improve things. We have lost firefighters from neighboring communities to suicides since I've been here as fire chief. I lost three of my fellow firefighters while some Lansing did suicide and others attempted. So it's near and dear to my heart. It is a problem and we're doing great strides down here to try to improve that and make that better. So that's why I figured if I was gonna talk about it, I should show the shirts. That's why I'm dressed this way tonight. With that being said, on October 4th, along with the fall festival, we are having our fire department open house. Cause that does kick off fire prevention week. So that's Saturday from 1:00 to 4:00 at fire station number two, which is the one 1070 East Nine Mile. We'll be having a lot of fun for families. So come out, make a great fun day in Ferndale. Go between both events, they're both on the same side of town. So easy to get back and forth, they're really close to each other. Have a great time. We'll be doing a lot of great demonstrations. We will be demonstrating the fire blankets that are becoming popular. And if people come and see the demonstration and learn how to use them, we will provide one free to you to take home with you. So a lot of, you know, good stuff, so come on, have some fun.
Police.
Good evening again, mayor and council. Uh, the chief wanted me to mention a community engagement event. It's hosted by Citizens for Ferndale. And it is September 16th, 6:00 PM to 7:00 PM. And it's located at 215 West, which is 215 West Nine Mile. Thank you.
DDA.
Good evening again. Um, first, I would just like to give a special thanks to the Ferndale Arts and Beautification Commission. We wrapped our final nine-on-nine concert series on Sunday. Um, that event would not be possible without incredible volunteers from right here in the community. Um, so that was just again, just nine fun weekends. And if you're looking for something to do, not this weekend, but next weekend, it is one of the best weekends in Ferndale for DIY Street Fair and Funky Ferndale Art Festival. That will be, uh, September 29th, excuse me, September 19th through 21st. Um, the DIY Street Fair will be here on the east side. Um, that will begin on Friday evening at 6:00 until 11:00, run Saturday from 11:00 to 11:00 and then Sunday from 11:00 AM to 9:00 PM. On the west side, there will be the Funky Ferndale Art Fair, um, that begins Friday at 5:00 until 9:00, Saturday from 10:00 until 9:00 and then Sunday from 11:00 until 5:00. So those are fantastic ways to check out, um, some, first of all, our amazing shops and businesses that are downtown anyway, all year long, but also support some great artists. Uh, the patio zone will be in full effect and we're just gonna keep the really great weather going for the month of September. So we've got that locked down hopefully. Um, uh, and yeah, we look forward to seeing you back in downtown Ferndale. Thank you.
And communications again. Setting a time limit this time though.
Yeah, I know, I know. I'll stop my, my three minutes. No, I just want to say thank you. Um, I, I've been going through it a little bit, but I know that you've all been seeing that. Staff has, has supported me so much. It's like every week I get a comment from a different staff member, like, are you doing okay? What can we do to help? So everyone's been amazing. Um, specifically, I want to thank James, cause we've been kind of, James Kay, we've been kind of partners in crime for some of the stuff. He's been very helpful and Colleen, they both have, um, really been advocates for this department and for me, and I sincerely appreciate it. And I want to thank, uh, Jim, Teresa and Casey for speaking tonight. Um, and I of course want to thank you all. I appreciate your passion for this and I really look forward to working with you in this new capacity. So thank you very much.
That's all.
So DPW? I, I did have a I did have a question. I'm asking because I have a question for you. You don't have to, you don't have to get up. I just want to make sure that I have that leaf collection down pat. You said if your garbage, if your garbage is picked up on Tuesday, then your leaf collection will be on Monday for me.
Yeah, and then if you're Friday, Friday will be Monday.
Friday will be Monday.
And then we will have a map in the newsletter.
Okay, all right. That's all I want. Yep. All right. All right, and now we'll go to council. I don't remember where I started last.
We started here, oh, okay.
Go ahead. Councilmember Johnson.
First, I'm so happy to see more and more of these intergovernmental agreements and arrangements appearing on the agenda. This has just been a dream of mine for a very long time in Ferndale, is us leaning into partnerships with their cities in a more explicit way, really starting to build that sort of regionalism model. We, we are not going to, we can't do this alone, and partnering with our partners strengthens all of us. And so I'm just so delighted to see this, and I'm doubly delighted that it saves us money. It's, you know, it's great, it builds these bridges, it, but it also saves us money and makes our operations more efficient and cost-effective. Second, just a minor thing, you know, when you guys are doing like fun things or even more serious things, like the suicide awareness t-shirts and things like that, let the council know. There are a lot of these things, like we might like to participate in those things, join in, help out, contribute money to certain things or whatever, you know, fire blankets, these are all things like we can also help learn and understand ourselves and then, you know, do that. So, you know, don't forget the council. When you guys are doing these fun things, I think we would love to also help represent these issues and these causes and these things that everyone's passionate about, because that's what we're here for as well. So I love it. Love that we're, I just, I love how passionate and active everybody is in this government, in kind of carrying a torch for causes and doing good. And it's just, it's wonderful.
Emmanuel would like me to remind you that he is looking for volunteers for Fall Festival.
What do I get in return? Do I get a t-shirt?
I think he wants a t-shirt, yeah.
No, I'm just kidding. I'm just kidding. Next year, that's my, that's the incentive?
All right, moving on to Mayor Potem.
The only thing I have tonight is, Roger, I think it's your last meeting, right? Not if, not if that's accurate. It sucks to see you go, and I just wanted to say I have found you to be brilliant, shrewd, act with integrity, you've always been an advocate for the city. Thank you. You're going to be missed more than you'll know.
Yeah, I wanted to thank Summer first off for nine-on-nine. Just completed our nine concerts, and she was at all but one, and she was the catalyst to get it started in the beginning and kept it going. It was super successful this year, super great. And also Mercedes and LaBea, who were also there from the first one all the way through this one, helped pick out the bands. We had a Children's Day this Sunday, and it was great. There were so many kids there and so many families. It was awesome, we're going to have to do that again. And LaBea was the one that really pushed for that. And again, our Fab Commission, they showed up week after week to support and help out and volunteer even more of their time. So it's, it was my favorite thing this summer on Sundays, and now I have Lions football, so yeah, it's perfect timing for it to end. And I just want to say thank you, Roger. It's been a pleasure working with you, and you'll be missed, and I wish you the best of luck in your next endeavor.
And yes, how did I not know it was your last meeting?
I know.
You admitted that. Okay. But yes, I just want to thank you for all of the work that you've put in. You've done, you've done a lot, you've taken care of a lot, you've carried, you've carried me through all of the mayor's business councils, and I really appreciate your help. I really enjoy seeing the seniors who are getting their, their chores, the work, the grant that is covering the chores, I'm seeing them get that work done. So that if, if nothing else, that, that's a huge win, and they won't forget that, and I won't forget that. I want to thank you. And thank you. You're still in the community, you won't be a stranger, you're around, right?
Mm-mm.
All right. I just also want to also touch base on the, what I was mentioning, SimCOG is having that training, Crisis Management for Local Government Leaders, October 8th, 9:00 AM to 2:30 at the SimCOG office on Woodward Avenue in Detroit. I would like to go to that, but they say we only need two, so, I mean, I'm not married to it, but I want to do it, so they're limited us to two people, so. But I'm putting it out there in case anyone else wants to go. And based on hearing what I heard the chief say today, I'd like to end with the proclamation of being read for Suicide Month. September is known as National Suicide Prevention Month and is intended to help raise awareness surrounding suicide prevention resources available in the community. World Suicide Prevention Day is observed each year on September 10th. Suicidal thoughts can affect anyone regardless of age, gender, race, orientation, income level, religion, background, or even profession. I added that. According to the CDC, each year more than 49,000 people die by suicide. Suicide is the second-leading cause of death for people 10 to 34 years of age, the fourth-leading cause among people 35 to 54 years of age, and the eighth-leading cause among people 55 to 64 years of age. Organizations like the National Alliance on Mental Illness and National Suicide Prevention Lifeline work to help individuals in crisis and provide resources to shed light on the highly stigmatized topic. Every member of our community should understand that throughout life stages, we all struggle, we all need, throughout life struggles, we all need the occasional reminder that we are all silently fighting our own battles. Oakland Community Health Network is committed to being a zero-suicide organization and cultivate a network of providers who are engaged in the zero-suicide philosophy. Now therefore be it resolved that the City of Ferndale hereby recognizes September 2025 as National Suicide Prevention Month. The City of Ferndale calls upon our citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, and schools to recommit our state to increasing awareness and understanding of suicide prevention and the need for appropriate and accessible services to assist individuals in crises. With that being said, this meeting's adjourned at 9:19 PM. Thank you.